Noel, how did that housing thing go over in Northeast Harbor?
The library?
The library, yeah.
It was good?
Yeah, a lot of people show up?
There were quite a few people in the audience, and I think maybe forty or so online. I thought it was a good discussion.
Yep.
Happy to be a part of it.
Solved all the problems?
Yeah, we got it all. People would just listen to me, and it would be all right.
Yeah. If I ruled the world, it would be perfect. Yeah, Lawson's talking to me here, he's got a family emergency.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't know what.
Yes, yes.
Well, it's six o'clock. Is that tape on?
Yep.
Okay, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, May twenty-third to order. Rule call. We have Brett Witham, Beth Gott, Jeffrey Young, myself, Mark Good, and Lawson has informed us that he's unable to make it tonight, so I'll take a motion to excuse him.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Zero. Okay. I think the agenda looks fine. Anybody have any problems with it? If none, we'll move on to minutes. I saw no issues. Perhaps better eyes than mine found something, or better minds? If not, I'll take a motion to approve them.
So moved. I'll move that we, I'm, both minutes of the same motion?
I don't see a problem with that. You were at both meetings, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and April twenty-fifth, April twenty twenty-three.
For approval.
You seconded it? And Beth seconded it, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four zero. And once again, I think Heidi's doing a great job of these. Okay, whole business. Noel Musson, short-term rentals. Mr. Musson, can you step right up?
Can I get point of order first?
Sure.
We touched on this subject a few meetings ago when this first came to us, before it went up to the select and it came back, as to whether there's any conflict of interest of people that might own rental properties, short-term rental properties.
You, I remember you mentioning that.
Right. I was wondering if we should discuss if anyone has conflicts, because of law that could affect their business of renting short-term property.
I have short-term rentals.
In Tremont?
Yeah.
I wish I did. I'd like to. I will. If I could do it, I'd ask before the law became.
What are you gonna do with that garage, anyway?
I'm gonna put some people there, maybe. Depending on how this plays out. No, I'm just kidding.
At this point, I don't really see a conflict. And what do you think, Jesse?
I, all I can add is that I know when it was before the Select Board, two of the Select Board members have short-term rentals.
Yes.
And the town's attorney advised they did not need to recuse themselves from any of the discussions.
I have a short-term.
Unless the board felt.
Perhaps the experience could be helpful in...
Right, one way or the other.
You don't have any problems with the licensing structure or anything, right?
No, absolutely not.
I have a short-term rental.
Yeah, I know you do. I was gonna mention that, too.
Anybody that doesn't?
Yes, me. When I want one.
I had a long-term rental.
You only want?
It's a nightmare.
I, I think the, just the optics of a board member participating in a statute can affect their business is we should avoid. And I don't care what the attorney, was that James Collier? I don't really care what James has to say for himself. I don't respect his opinions quite often. So I, I take that with a grain of salt. So I, I think we should discuss whether we want Beth participating, since she's the only one who has a short-term rental.
I mean, I personally, I, well, I'm trying to think how our, how our conflict rules work. I think the first, I think, my, if my recollection is correct, it first, the, the first inquiry is with the person, like, I believe it's with Beth. And, and she, you know, sort of thinks about it and, you know, conveys whether she feels that, you know, whatever is before, whatever, she could be impartial, or, or it would skew her judgment. Now, I'm not saying we accept that, but I believe that's the first step. And then we, you know, and we would, you know.
Right, and then if anybody feels differently, then that person can make a motion.
Can make a motion.
The board has to vote.
I don't know, I'll be, I'll be candid with you. I don't know that we're necessarily gonna vote on anything tonight, so I don't, I feel like it's not ripe for discussion.
Aren't we trying to create an ordinance for short-term rentals?
That's right. That's right. That doesn't necessarily.
A licensing or registration
Yeah.
of system.
Yeah.
It would not.
It wouldn't necessarily be adversely, it wouldn't necessarily adversely impact someone who had them, necessarily. And it could also be, I think, beneficial to have someone on the, I mean, the whole point is to have people on these panels when you vote that represent people in the community. There are other people in the community that have short-term rentals. So I, I guess I don't feel strongly about it, certainly not at this point, but if we wanna move forward with that process of having Beth say that, you know, just to express what her view is, then we discuss it, and if someone wants to make a motion, then, then fine.
So if someone owned a gas station, and there were a gas station, an application for a gas station before us, should that person recuse themselves? Jeff, in your mind?
I think all of those scenarios like that could take all of you time. And I don't think it has much merit to do with scenarios of that nature. What we have is a specific issue before, so we should look at it with the, with the facts that we have. We have, we're discussing an ordinance that will affect short-term rentals, a board member that's gonna be in the formulation period of, what we might put forward to a public hearing, and has a short-term rental. And that board member could easily participate in, Brett was talking about, can give us some experience when we have a public hearing and speaking at that time. And that's when we have people with interests and, and have experience give us some input.
Beth, do you feel you have conflict of interest here in this matter?
Well, I don't really feel I do, because we really don't have anything yet. I mean, we're on the ground level of trying to figure it out. I mean, we haven't, I mean, when we come to the point of, I guess, creating an ordinance, then maybe, but I just, I just don't feel that I would, you know, just vote yes, because I have a short-term rental. I mean, I, I wanna know what's going on as much as everybody else does.
And the planning board, if this sort of thing were enacted, the planning board actually would be done with it. We would have nothing to do with enforcing it. It would all be the code force of the officer and board of selection.
As drafted.
As drafted, yeah.
I, there are five planning board members, and although Lawson's not here, but I, I don't feel that the fact that one person on the planning board has short-term rentals is necessarily, you know, reflects or indicates that somehow the work product of, of, of the planning board is gonna be somehow, you know, biased because of we have someone on here who has experience. I just don't feel that way. And in fact, I mean, it could go.
Three to one, you're gonna dip sheet with this.
Yeah, I mean, it could go either way. I mean, it actually, like, if someone already has rentals, and putting a regulation on the books, actually, they might try to want that, because it could keep competition out. So I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess, I, I know where Jeff's coming from, though, I get it, and it is, you know, you do have optics. We need to be cognizant of that. I, I, you know, what I've heard Beth say is she doesn't feel that way right now. I don't think it's quite ripe. I don't, I think we're just gonna be discussing big-picture stuff tonight, and probably not even voting on anything.
I don't foresee us voting on anything tonight, but.
I don't know. I, I would not be in favor of a motion right at this point, that's what I would say. But I do, I do understand raising, and it, you know, it's a good point, it's something we, we should continue to revisit, you know, as this, as this progresses, and maybe we'll get, you know, Lawson here in a full, you know, but I think for right now, I wouldn't, I would not support a motion to, to have Beth recuse herself at this point.
So it would help, the, the process that I think we discussed the last time I was here was, tonight's meeting was to review a very comprehensive draft, which includes a bunch of different things that you may not wanna put for in a draft. And then I go back to the drawing board, not to the drawing board, I go back and revise whatever comments we have for tonight for clarity purposes, and then sometime in June, maybe we have a public hearing on this, and then in July is when we have more final discussions as a board, and then in August, get to the selection. I think that's the process we have planned.
So Jeff, are you okay? Would you like to make a motion?
Well, with all the nuances to a statute of this nature, none of us know what subsections might have impact on the rentals that are owned by a board member. And they could have, make their statements about, oh, I don't think I should go in there. We don't know where that, where that's coming from. And the optics of that is what I'm arguing about. It's, it's, anyone's gonna look at it and say, gee, you know, they have short-term rentals, that influence their decision of making comments about various subsections within the ordinance.
So what?
What?
So what? The fact that she has experience in this, and she's gonna make comments, are you gonna make a motion or not? Because we're spending a lot of time, you're talking about this right now, I think we're wasting time. I'd like to just keep moving. So if you're gonna make a motion, make the motion.
I, I'll move that Beth should be recused from participating in the ordinance portions of discussion about short-term rentals.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Ah, you said discussion.
You can't have discussion unless there's a second.
Correct.
Okay, Noel. Hey, first comment there, Noel. I think in that first sentence, it should be changed to the town of Tremont, instead of Bongasur.
Yes, I did circle it.
I actually read it multiple times, too.
First thing, it jumped out at me.
Yep, as you did, yep. Yes, it would. Well, this is not the exact version that was looked at in the town, not deserved, the purpose statement at the beginning was one that I had done in an early draft. So just let's start the conversation high, high level overview is, what we talked about at the last meeting was focusing on a licensing ordinance. So this, this draft doesn't deal with limiting the number of licenses or any other limiting factors of short-term rentals related to the numbers that you can have in town or anything like that. So it's a very broad ordinance from that perspective. Also, I think the question was, can we just, basically, I just took as much stuff as, as I had research on and information about and put them in different sections for discussion purposes. So it's a very comprehensive licensing ordinance in terms of the thing, the standards that you might wanna consider, and some of those other things. So based on that conversation, I thought, let's leave everything in, and then we can take stuff out. So that's the, that's sort of the premise that we'll work in there. And then also, in this framework, we have something called an owner-occupied short-term rental, which is basically if you live on the property, you know, if you have like an accessory dwelling or a garage apartment or something, you live there year-round, that doesn't count toward short-term rentals. So that's, I think I have it.
So, so if I have, if I rent a room in my house, and I live there.
It doesn't count.
I fall into that category.
Yep.
And also, it seems like if I have, let's say, a garage or an apartment above it, and I live in the house, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Right, so these are policy discussions that, that you should have as a board, as a town. And I'm putting, I'm pointing them out because the current draft keeps those in for discussion purposes. But if we're directed to dig it out, we can take it out. And then everything, you know, that's basically called a short-term rental or meets the definition of short-term rental would, would apply. So why don't we start with the purpose statement? And I don't know if this is really something we need to decide, you know, immediately, but I just wanted to provide kind of two examples. One is a very short and sweet purpose statement, and then the other one is a little more comprehensive, and it starts to deal with the impacts of a, of a short-term rental in a little more, a little more comprehensive way. Having to take questions and comments too as we go, but that's, that's sort of like, one of them, I think, sets the stage for a little more thoughtful, a little more regulatory approach in the future, whereas the other one, I think, is a little more just right to the point.
So what you're suggesting is that one sentence or the alternative language?
Yeah, some version of the alternative language, yeah. And of course, also, I would say, like, there's no reason why, there could be a very, there could be an in-between or some other version, but these are kind of examples for consideration. You could have a more comprehensive one, which is the one that's in the box, or a very short, sweet purpose statement.
All for short, sweet, and easily understandable.
That's funny, I was gonna go the other way.
I like that.
You know, because I think the box, I think it just, I read it, and it, to me, it, you know, perfectly sort of encapsulates the, the, the various views and provides context, I think important context, for why, you know, we're, we're doing this. And it, it strives to, to sort of balance, or at least, you know, layout that we, we're considering these various views and, and trying to balance these factors, as opposed to just saying, you know, is it health and well, health, safety and overall well-being? I mean, I, you know, is it really health, safety, I don't know. It's, it's more about balancing the, all of those things that are in that paragraph. You know, people who live here, and the ability to rent supports their ability to continue to live here. You know, the, the view of, you know, maintaining the quality of life and the quiet enjoyment, though, and how those short-term rentals sort of impact community. I mean, it's, to me, it's, the, the box language covers everything, all the concerns we've heard, and it, it's informative, I think. I wouldn't change a thing in the box, but that's just me.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I just, like I said, I prefer things, but I, I can see what you're saying.
Now, you could, as it's revised, like, this would be what you would put in the original one, like, you know, if you, like, two or three years down the road, and you're revising, you'd probably, you'd pull that out and say, you know, once people kind of know what's there and why, you could go with something shorter, you know, but I'm just, to me, it sets up why, you know, the factors on why we headed down this path, which, as I understand it, to this point, it's just data, it's the data exercise.
That's the premise that we started with, yes.
It's, you know, accumulating data, and then, but obviously for the purpose of then.
Beth, and Jeff, any thoughts?
I like the longer one, in the box. It might explain to some other people the reason why some locals do the short-term rentals.
Yeah, continued ability remains year-round resident.
Yeah, as a year-round resident, yep.
You guys have convinced me.
On, on the longer one, there's two words that bother me.
Okay.
One about the fifth or sixth line down, legitimate concerns. I would take out the word legitimate, just say concerns.
Okay.
And it's undefined within itself what they are, so just concerns says it. And in the, basically, last full line, modest, I, I don't think we should define our performance standards as modest or anything else than a performance standard.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Those are good changes.
And that's one of the purposes, we're gonna find out if there is a legitimate concern.
Right, you legitimized the concern by saying legitimate, and, you know, we don't.
And modest, yeah.
Then addressing Beth's comment about locals brings me to the big issue that I wrestle with is, who can rent in our short-term rentals? Can a corporation come in and buy every other house on the street?
Yep, yep.
And rent them?
Right now, yeah. And it's happening all over.
Right.
Yeah. It's not just locals.
Okay, so I don't need to go any further than this, except to ask, is there ways that we can? When I thought about this and say, well, residents, okay, that means I, we could do it on this board. Well, how about the summer residents that come here, do we define summer resident? How about the people, the property have for generations, rent occasionally or frequently? They're not residents, like, they can't vote here. But I don't wanna cut them off either, but I don't want to be creating, I wanna be able to stop the situation where almost a corporate activity is taking place, a commercial activity, by an outside who never even been to this town, but buying up homes to rent down short-term basis because it's a hot business. That's.
You're jumping right into the heart of the matter here, Jeff.
Well, it's right here.
You know, I.
Go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Well, we're, you know, we're getting, you know, getting down the road a bit, but I, you know, I, I, you know, I think, at least, I'll, so, 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 it's kind of what, what I, how I feel about it. It uses the term property owner, which is probably too broad, because that would probably, that, you know, you could have a corporate property owner come in, and then they're a property owner. I, you know, I, I think we're gonna need, I think it's, it's about whether, to me, it's whether the person lives there, you know, for some period of time, be it year-round or maybe seasonally. If they wanna rent that property or a property on their property, that would probably be okay. And then somehow, I don't know about the constitutionality, though, of saying, like, I don't know if you can say that, because, but if you could do that, then you, the corporate, you know, corporate entity doesn't, you know, even seasonally live there. It's, I.
You can't say that.
You can't.
Is there any way of restricting this, the issue?
I think we, everybody's struggling with sort of the same question in other communities, is that, you know, there's something that feels different about a corporate entity coming in and buying up a bunch of units and then just renting them out versus somebody that's more local coming in and buying them out. The problem is, once you start to make that distinction, it, there's, there's.
The commerce clause gets to come, gets kind of.
Those people from away come here and do this.
I, I think it's simple to say, many properties in the city are owned by an LLC. It's a popular ownership of summer homes and so forth.
Absolutely.
And that's a form of corporate ownership.
Yes.
So let's take the word corporate out of the conversation, because it has, that's emotionally char, corporate, you know.
Yep.
And just say, someone from New York comes in and buys fifteen properties along the street as an individual, never gonna reside here, she's never gonna reside in those fifteen, but bought them just for rental properties.
Yep.
Is there any way we can address that type of?
I think what you get down to, I suspect, is you, you have to limit the number, like, the num, whatever the number is. And then you might be able to provide for an exception for owner-occupied.
Sure, I think that's.
And so you, that's the two, that's the two combination, like, you, you basically cap it, and then the owner-occupied exception, and that's the best you can do.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could start to look at some other tools that get to the root of what you're talking about, which I think I understand and appreciate. However, the way, because I ask this very specific question to other attorneys, and it's, you know, it's just described to me, it's the same thing as saying, hey, you could, you could put a racial card to that, you could put it, you know, other things. You just can't say, because you're from New York, you can't do this. Like, you can't buy property here and do the same things that everybody else who owns property here can do. It's not, you just can't do it. But, but I think if we're starting to take the question and get to the root of the matter, which is, how is this use changing the quality of our community, that's where we have to start to target in a, in a bigger conversation.
I understand the concern, and I'm concerned about that, too, but I think that's beyond the purview of what we're supposed to be doing here, which is developing a licensing ordinance, not limiting who, who can, who can and who can't have one of these things.
Well, I would, I would encourage you to continue to have.
That could be step two.
Discussion to the point.
I mean, I think it's part of the discussion.
Getting right to the heart of the matter.
Like, but don't, don't lose sight of the, the, the objective of this draft is very specific. And the point, the purpose of the licensing ordinance as envisioned, as I'm, as I understand it right now, is, let's stop talking about anecdotal information about how many people own this from here and there.
Get the data.
And let's get the data, and then, and in the process of having a conversation like this, we should start to highlight, okay, what is the concern that short-term rentals brings up? And what are the tools that we can use as a community to mitigate those concerns? And so I wouldn't, I'd like to have this conversation. I don't think you should lose sight of this, that part of the conversation. It may not be solved by this tool, but this tool will give you some information to help facilitate the next step in the process.
Makes sense.
That's how I approach it.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's a way I.
I'm curious, one thing I'm thinking about, I'm just curious as to your thoughts and experience in other, you know, towns and whatnot. Once you do this, like, with the data acquisition part, I presume, you know, my first thought was, I gotta get in under the wire. You know, like, do you see, and so I feel like, once you do this, you gotta be, you've gotta be disciplined on when you're, you take the next step, because you're gonna, I would think you're gonna incent some behaviors that are gonna drive up utilization, you're gonna drive up, you know, the utilization, people trying to get in under the wire, so to speak. Did you see any of that?
Potentially, yes. I, I think that it's about, like, the way the conversation is going in this town is, I think it's important to, to keep the narrative that where you're taking a methodical approach, we're not creating a sense of urgency that people need to go out and all of a sudden convert a bunch of things to short-term rentals that they wouldn't normally do. Like, we're really are just creating a licensing ordinance that's going to help us understand what the issue is. It could be a, I mean, the, the information could come back and say, wow, we really don't have a problem with short-term rentals. Or, boy, this is what this, this is what the percentage of our housing stock is in the short-term rentals. That's really what we're trying to do. What percentage of the housing stock in Tremont is being used currently for short-term rentals? And how does that feel for the communities? But on the flip side, I would continue to say, you may not even, there are other things that are gonna come out of this conversation that you, as a planning board, might wanna look at in the context of a land use ordinance, that are gonna address some of the things that, that might pop up from this conversation that aren't just saying, you can have this use, you can't have this use. I don't know if it's, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there will be some of that, but I think it's, you know, I think you should, if you take an iterative approach, you're gonna be in a better situation and kind of keep the emotion at a, at a simmer as opposed to a boil, which is
Thank you.
very easily gonna happen in this particular topic. But there's a lot to consider. I mean, it's a historical use in, on the whole island, and we're going through a housing, you know, there's some real housing challenges. I mean, everything is all so tied together. But you have to, I mean, this is where I, my, either my strength or my downside of these particular issues, like taking a very, you just have to take it all in and then figure out what. you just have to take it all in and then figure out what, what works for Tremont.
Yep. So the long shot of it is, this is the beginning and not the end.
Definitely not the end, no.
So, so, under lodging establishments exempted?
Yes.
Maybe it's, okay, it doesn't matter, it's gonna be.
You were thinking campgrounds?
Yeah.
I thought the same thing, but there was somewhere later on.
Yeah, it's not a dwelling, right?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Dwelling use.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
I will say, I did just, I have just started going back through the land use ordinance to make sure that some of the terminology matches the uses that are allowed, but the premise here is that if you have like a B and B, you get a whole, um, I suppose it will be a camp center, things that already have a regulatory thing, this doesn't count as that. So, yeah, under applicability, as I mentioned before, um, you know, what, here's what applies. And then in this version, I'd just like some guidance and thoughts on whether or not the whole owner occupied short-term rental makes sense. And then on the, on page two, I just highlighted the definition in yellow. Or, I mean, the ra, the result of this is basically you're just not getting the data from people who have, who do short-term rentals, but just this part of their house, for their property. So from a strictly data perspective, you would not want to exempt them.
I don't really have a problem with somebody bringing out a room in the house, short-term. But let's say the accessory residential dwelling unit could be taking a year-round rental off the market and people just using for short-term. So I think that might have some impact on what we're trying to establish here.
Yeah, so I think the question I would pose is, is that the kind of data you would want to collect through this process?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mean we necessarily do anything with it, but I would at least, you know, I think we would want all, we would want that data point to, you know? Yeah.
So, if you're in a house, if I have a big enough house to rent a room, that you, you don't care about. But if it's, if it's like on my garage apartment or whatever, that we want tracked, just in case.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Just for tracking purposes, and I don't know what the others think.
Well, it'd be good, nice to know rental is a rental, I mean. So, I mean, the data would be useful, I would think.
Yeah, yeah.
More data is better than less, unless you get lost in it.
Which is easy to happen.
As long as the data's valid, right?
I always say, especially when you go through like other types of analysis, that you can die going down the data radical. Just, it's not gonna tell you anything different.
At the end of the day, going through all this, it'd be sad if we turn around, oh, I wish we thought of asking that. But we can ask it and ignore it down the road a ways.
Yep. I also think, you know, as we're going through this process, I mean, wanna have these conversations and help everybody benefit from other things that we've learned along the way through this process, but we could always add it back in if it comes to issues.
Yeah, I say strike that part. Leave the owner occupied as just the, the first sentence there.
Which, where are you?
Uh, second page under definitions.
Yep. But.
In the case of one family. Accessory.
Which you strike and mark?
The second sentence, which is the accessory.
Okay.
Dwelling unit. Does that make sense, folks?
I don't know if I've worked on this one a little bit more. I think it could be also interpreted a little differently than what you're intending, so I just wanna.
Okay.
Probably add some.
Yeah, what are, what are you trying to do?
The definition here.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually two different things in my mind. One is if you want to rent a room in your house to somebody on a short-term basis. The other one is if you have an accessory dwelling unit, a, a garage apartment, let's say. And is that, should that be owner occupied and therefore exempt from registration or not? I think it should be registered because.
If it's separate.
If it's separate.
But not if it's, but not if it's a room.
Yeah, not if it's one, yeah. Because that accessory dwelling unit or accessory structure could be a year-round rental, for one thing, which we know we have a shortage of here.
Yeah. I don't know.
We're not saying you can't do it, we're just, for collecting data and registration purposes.
Right, we're saying we're not gonna collect that data. We're not gonna collect the data on a.
Room.
On a room rental.
But we will for.
Except if it's a separate building.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or apartment.
My parts.
Yeah, it could, yeah, it could be just an apartment, yeah, a house, a duplex, let's say. Yeah, good point.
I just, I don't know, I feel like more data is better because I feel like people could, I just, I don't know, but, I don't know.
Oh, you think, you're saying you think the room should be included?
I would, I would just wanna know, I mean, it doesn't even do anything with it, but I just.
Maybe I'll, I mean, I can draft up something and we can always decide to make a change.
Yeah. I think in a minimum, you'd wanna make them two different, like, one would be owner occupied the same building, and then I think what you, which you don't, which would, would just put aside. And then owner, I guess it'd be property occupied, separate dwelling.
Yeah.
Like a boarding house.
Like above the garage type thing, and you're living in your house and you're renting out of something above the garage, it's a detached garage. You'd want that data.
Right.
And you'd want that license.
Right.
But if they were renting a room out in the, in the same building that the owner was occup, living in, you, that's not data we would, we would collect.
Well, that was what I was thinking, but maybe we do, that's, just one person.
Mark, you know, I inherited mom's house. I rented out seven bedrooms in that house and lived in it.
So that would be exempted.
Like a boarding house.
And I did.
Yeah, but that wasn't short-term, or was it?
It was short-term. We had seven bedrooms, seven bathrooms, you know?
I think I would collect the data, I think I would define, I think I would have a different category for that and just.
But in the application.
Yeah.
You could have that distinction.
Right, right, okay, right.
So everything counts as a short-term rental.
Right, and then you just have, you just, it's another way to sift the data. At least you have, you don't need to do anything with it, but.
Yes.
So we'd have to change that in the applicability.
Yep.
And the definitions.
So right now, what I'm hearing is a consensus to just take out the whole owner occupied thing and we're just calling everything a short-term rental, more or less.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Got it.
The others agree? Did I hear anything from the left side of the table here?
All right. I think that pretty much covers the first page. I mean, the validity and separability thing is something that is in most ordinances and if one part of the ordinance is invalid, that doesn't mean it interrupts the ordinance kind of thing. Under the definitions again, we may have brought some of the definitions based on that change that we just made, aside from the owner occupied one that's highlighted in yellow. And then under short-term rental, I just wanted to point out, you can do a couple of different things for the definition. I use, I'm using nights because of some feedback I have had in other areas as opposed to days, but you could do days, it's very common to do either one. Then there is, what I thought was really some interesting comments, like if you have a family member coming up for a couple of weeks or something that you're not actually getting paid to stay there. There's some exemptions that, you know, seem to make sense. So that's what is highlighted in blue. Just wanna point those out.
It all makes sense to me. Um, is this, uh, we do have a definition for transient. It might have to be changed. Transient, a person staying at a place that does not constitute his or her home or usual dwelling unit for less than seven days is what our ordinance says, land use ordinance.
You may wanna update to amend the land use ordinance and change it to short-term rental versus transient.
Yeah, yeah.
Either.
Yeah. But that's something to note that that's in there, so there's no conflict later on.
Yeah, we can look into that too. Um, under the requirements section, the, down under B two, I just was highlighting, these are some things that the applicant could provide on an application form. I did, I do have a draft. It's not really ready for circulating yet because I don't know what's happening after tonight's meeting and there's things in here that need to get reflected.
Okay, okay.
So, we've got a, a working draft. And, you know, some of the information that we would wanna think about collecting would be the owner's, you know, owner's representative contact information, property information, number of guests that are allowed in that unit, emergency contact information, how many units you might have available if you have a property that has multiple units on it. The policy number, this gets to some later things that we could talk about, but, you know, you could ask for insurance information and policy numbers on the application form, you know, the deed, stuff like that.
And the number of guests allowed is predicated upon bedrooms and septic standards, correct? Like, later on, you reference that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And then we could add something like, what kind of unit, are you talking, you know, is it a a, a bedroom or a, you know, you, you know, I have to add some of that language. Is it a bedroom in your house? Is it a separate structure? Is it, you know, we could start to ask some of that information. Does that all sound good so far?
Mm-hmm.
All right? Again, I'm gonna skip to the blue parts, but if you had questions on things between there, please stop me. Because again, I've read it a lot, so I'm probably gonna skip over one or two things.
Which, where are you skipping to?
What's that?
What, what are you skipping to?
I, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read through each thing, I'm skipping to the blue highlighted part.
Could you just say what section, because I printed mine out as in black and white, so blue doesn't mean anything to me.
Yeah, so, but what I'm asking is, if you have notes on anything that I don't pause at, just head, head me back in the other direction. I, I don't know.
You're going down to standards now, is blue?
I'm gonna go down to standards, yep.
Um, I took questions under C.
Okay.
One. The code enforcement can inspect. Jesse, is this realistic, given the fact we have difficulty getting a code officer these days because of employment not available? And you're sort of stepping in and out of the position? Is it realistic that you could do this? It's just.
It depends on volume. I mean, first of all, the way this is worded is nay, so.
Right.
If the code officer determines they need to, so it doesn't mean they'll do all of them. But I think it depends on the volume of, you know, I'm not too concerned about administration-wise processing applications and licenses. But if there's, you know, we receive a hundred of them and all one hundred need to be inspected or we have a hundred calls from residents who think there's a rental next to them that's not registered, then that will get difficult.
Jeff, the way I was looking at it is, I, I think it'd be difficult to enforce all that, but it, the language is there, so if they receive, the town receives complaints, the, the CEO can go out and do the inspection and if there are violations, I don't think we're ever gonna have somebody of this scale to go around to.
Right.
Look at all of them.
Yeah, I just.
But there's some teeth, teeth in the whole thing.
My second comment I made while looking at that is, we should have a notice requirement in, I think, if Jesse or the CEO.
Oh, for the, for the inspection.
Is gonna do inspection, I think the homeowner is entitled to notice, should be entitled to notice.
Set up a no-knock warrant?
Insurance company plays a big part in, in standards too, so.
The sheriff's department?
No, the insurance company.
Insurance company, oh, okay, yeah.
So we could add, we could add a sentence somewhere in there that just says, you know, if the code enforcement officer needs to do an inspection, proper notice will be given or something along those lines. I think that's what you're saying.
Proper notice versus, you need to say, 24-hour notice, whatever you make up.
Exactly.
Proper notice isn't defined.
Yeah, yeah, in, in the term, we'll put some specifics to it, yep. I get your point.
Beth, let me ask you this, does the insurance, does the insurance company come out and look at your short-term rentals?
They, um, they ask what you have, like, you have forms to fill out, so like, had to have so many fire, um, smoke detectors.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think they had, there was a carbon monoxide. Yeah, and then, yeah, and the bathrooms have to be a certain way and safety-wise and.
Did they ever get concerned about, about window size?
Well, our, the windows at Douglas's are all crank out, so, um, it'd be hard for anybody to get out of them. A person of any size, you know? But they know, they never, no, they never asked about anything about windows.
Since we're going, going through these sections, D, um, that's the term of the license, so every license expires on December 31st. It's an annual license. Um, I think the way that this is written, I don't know specifically what section is, that it's, um, you can get, there's no deadline for applying, so you can, so, say you acquired a property that you wanted to turn into a short-term rental, you know, in March, you could get a license in March, but it's only good until December 31st. And then the other.
Hold, hold on a second.
Go ahead.
I, I still have a question about the smoke alarms. Outside each separate sleeping area, how are you defining a separate sleeping area?
Oh, you skipped way ahead.
Oh.
He's back on D.
Come on, D.
Up in here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yep, but, um.
I thought we'd gone to standards.
No, that's my fault. I skipped back.
Oh, okay.
But that's a great question. And I believe that there must be a term for that, I have to think about that one.
Okay, go back to what you're talking about.
You know, some of the rentals have pull-out couches in the living room or the deck.
Right, right, I know, that's what I'm saying, is a couch, separate sleeping area.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, back to where you were, sorry.
Well, so I'm just saying, D, D above that is the term of the license. B below that is how, how licenses can get transferred, so if you're buying on the license, if I'm a short-term rental and had a license and then I sold it to someone, um, then there, there's some transferability there of the license, but it is only valid for the year of the license, just trying to make it simple.
True, yeah.
I have a question on the D, um, the, where the town operates on a fiscal year. July 1st to June 30th. Do you know of any downside to having it be June 30th instead of December?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you what would be best.
I, um, in, in a simple process like this? I don't know, I'd have to think about that. I don't, I'm not sure.
So when we did the camp, new campground standards and, and we were talking about, was an inspection? That was going to be June, is that correct?
It definitely wasn't December, but.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. Just to make it easier for challenges.
So what are you suggesting, what date?
June 30th would be my preference.
I don't think we care one way or another, just as long as it, the town's happy, the CEO.
Okay. Any questions on transferability? And the other one here is notice, so basically this requirement is if you have a, if you get a short-term rental license, it needs to be in, where somebody could see it, change it to be inside the building, so, right near your door, essentially.
I think that should be near instead of neat. Inside neat the entrance?
Yes. Great. Four eyes are good.
Some habits die hard.
That's good. You find that situation where you've read things quite a few times and those types of things, you sort of like, yeah. All right, so under standards, the first one is...
I would also not say that posting should be in the units being rented. Coming back to the house in a garage apartment, it should be in the rental unit dwelling, not necessarily just the dwelling.
Yep.
Entrance of the rental unit, yeah.
Sure.
You try and give tenant notice to the tenant.
Pretty much.
Right, so it's gonna, whatever their rent...
Yep.
But Jeff, what if you rented out seven bedrooms, is it seven of them you put in each bedroom?
Well, if you have a common entrance to all seven, probably two are the common entrance. If two in the garage and three or five in the house, then I think we need some in the garage to the house.
That's it.
I think you, in that scenario, you might put the license in each bedroom, the door to each bedroom.
Each bedroom.
Yep.
In the back of the door.
Yeah, and that also raises another question which we haven't gotten to yet, but do you need, if you're doing, I have to remind you about this one, because this isn't the way this was designed, but say you do, you have a, you rented multiple bedrooms, do you need multiple licenses or can you get one license for multiple bedrooms? That, I'm not sure I can answer that question right now, I really have to think about it. I would think in your situation, you wouldn't have to get multiple licenses, we would just wanna know how many bedrooms you rented. But if I had a garage apartment and an accessory lawn unit separate from that, then each unit should have its own license.
If they're under common ownership?
Yeah. Think about that.
And what property?
Yep, if you have multiple units on a property, the way it's written now is you get multiple licenses, a license for each one, not for each property.
What if it's one structure?
That would be only one.
It's a hell of a big house.
I think that per structure maybe.
Because if you choose to discontinue...
Yeah. That's just the way it's written, obviously you guys are, you're directing me, I'm just telling you that question just popped into my mind.
Yeah.
How does this impact campgrounds with yurts and rentable buildings?
They're not residential dwelling units.
Is that reasonable?
They would be exempt.
Okay.
Yep.
I was thinking of the one down by the lighthouse, are they, they don't have, no, no catchings?
And none of their structures have utilities.
Okay, so under standards, again, these are, these are, there are a lot of standards in here, we can go in one direction or we could go in another direction and try to find some middle ground, but I'm just gonna go through the standards that we have here for discussion purposes and then you tell me how you wanna handle it, okay? So the first one is basically, at the time of issuance of a license, you just have to show that your property taxes and any water and sewer figures, I could probably take out for tree...
Yeah, tree, yeah.
Are up to date. Thoughts on that?
I have no problems with that, you know. I think the town would like that.
I'm sure they would.
There might be some short-term rental people that, never mind.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The next one is the street, you have to have a street number for nine-one-one standards if you're, if that's applicable.
Yeah, yeah, put in if applicable.
I assume everybody would. Smoke alarms, again, some of these people have said, you know, are a little redundant, but there are some things that may be redundant for insurance purposes and the short-term rental license ordinance, but these are in use, so you have to have smoke alarms. And then I'll go back to the question about the defining a sleeping area. Look on that a little bit. Same with carbon monoxide alarms. And then the one below that is E, which is gas alarms, they are required, and I don't, I think the term is gas alarm, you might know, but I'm gonna check to make sure it's not propane. Yeah, that's what I think.
So what would that be, from the fuel tank of the furnace?
Propane, maybe, sometime, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it's a state law.
What if you don't have LP?
You don't need one.
Good.
Yep. Portable fire extinguishers.
Hold on, and fuel-fired appliance, would stoves be included in that?
Yeah.
I would think so, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Okay.
Some of these I like to sort of dummy down the language even more and say like per, you know, you should have carbon monoxide alarms per state requirements or something like that, but...
Jesse, do you know what the state law has about wood stoves in rental units?
I don't think they have a...
I know insurance companies don't want them, is there any law about it? Do you know?
I don't know.
I know, my brother had to get rid of his wood, the wood furnace in one of his places he bought.
For, for insurance?
For, yeah, for rental.
Yeah, for insurance, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I know that.
But they don't have a fireplace, you know, it's not a fireplace, which to me is more, you know, so.
More dangerous. My insurance company dropped because I had a wood stove in my shop in the barn, and the barn wasn't attached to the house. If the barn was attached to the house, I had no problem with it. I haven't figured that logic out yet.
Yep.
It's okay if your barn burns down, but if it was attached to the house, the whole thing could go.
That's right, that's okay.
Right. Portable fire extinguishers is another one. G is related to parking.
Number of off-site, do you mean onsite parking spaces?
Nope.
Off-street.
I think, yeah, so the short-term rental guests and their guests are prohibited from parking in a manner that impedes access to emergency vehicles, I'm just gonna read it out loud so you don't think about it.
Oh, go down the next...
The owner must provide sufficient off-street parking. You want, you don't want them to park on the street.
Oh, that's the next sentence I'm talking about.
Okay, sorry. The number of short-term rental guests and vehicles allowed at the short-term rentals shall be limited to the number of off-street parking spaces.
It says off-site.
Oh, off-site.
It should be...
Yeah, off-street, yep.
And it should be off-street too?
Yep.
Not onsite, okay, I thought... Thank you.
Yep. So we could be like more specific here, but I think this one is basically just requiring sufficient amount of off-street parking.
We have some parking requirements for home office, uh, home businesses and home offices, don't we?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
So they could sort of blend together there, it should be consistent.
So you mean for home occupation?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're pretty... Home occupation twenty-seven.
Home occupation...
Home occupation's twenty-seven, but that may not be for parking. Land use ordinance. Must satisfy the home occupation parking requirements, so okay. Parking standards, order.
On home, two spaces plus two spaces required for single family unit. And we have discretion of the board to set requirements for demonstrated clause. I don't think we want all the short-term rentals before us.
Worse basis. With this, with this...
Yeah, I don't think, I think...
Home under home occupation? No.
No, I just try and coordinate so we have some consistency within regulations.
Yeah, theoretically it's an approved residential use that you're writing out, so it would fall within those categories. Okay? Are you seem okay right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Trash removal, at least one for me while I was being rented. H, or the I is occupancy limits, so this is just basically the occupancy of a short-term rental is two, two, no more than two short-term rental guests per bedroom, plus two additional short-term rental guests for a total for the entire dwelling unit, so there's an example of how you do math there. Seem reasonable for now?
Well, I have a question, and I would ask it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I've seen short-term rentals that have beds where they have a double or a queen bed on the bottom and a bunk bed on top, that puts three people in the bedroom. Or they have two separate bunk beds for the kids, bro.
Yeah, so this is putting a limit on that.
And, and the reason is for the septic system, right? Waste water disposal.
Yep.
And, and that's one of the big concerns that's been expressed to us in talks before you ever got involved, no?
Yes. I appreciate that.
And the, the, state does have some standards on septic systems and how many bedrooms, right? That's how they do it?
Well, the septic systems are designed based on the number of bedrooms.
Right.
Yes.
Which is based on...
There's a bunch of math that they do to figure out, like this is what we're assuming you're gonna have in a bedroom, therefore the size of the system needs to be a certain, yeah, accommodate, that accommodates a certain size. You can have like fifty bathrooms and three bedrooms, based on the septic system. Yep. So there's a limiting factor there, and these two kind of work together to say, well, if your septic system, if your septic system, which is a residential use, is designed for a three-bedroom home, then you're not putting twenty-five people into rental, because it'll burden on your septic system. That's the idea. All right? So we're okay with that occupancy limits for now, as a starting point?
Everybody okay?
Yep, so the next one is advertising. I put this one in here for discussion, may or may not be necessary, but the provisions in this one basically say you can't advertise for a short-term rental unless you have a license. And then talks about advertising a little bit and what that means, and then the advertisement has to be consistent with the short-term rental license, and then including the rental license number. And that, I just wanna do a little more research on that, because sometimes...
Ooh, that's gonna be a tough one to...
Yeah, putting the number in there might be a little more difficult.
Yeah, I...
Does that section need to specify what the recourse is if there is a penalty on the location? Or does that fall down further?
I think that might be down a little further.
Yeah, there are violations penalties enforced there, probably.
So, how do you feel about that?
I think that about covers it, I'm concerned about the, oh, sure, short-term rental license number. Yeah, I don't know if that's necessary.
So, that, I'll just, I mean, so the reason why you would do that is if you were in a such, there are communities in the country that are very inundated with short-term rentals, and they're, they have caps on the number of licenses that you can have, and there are companies out there that actually can track whether or not you're renting your short-term rental in violation of this ordinance, and they, one of the ways that they can do, help do that is by the kind of correlating, here's the short-term rental licenses with what you're advertising, so they can see on Airbnb or whatever that you don't have a license number, and they can, they can tag that.
From an enforcement perspective, it would save a ton of time for the staff member, code officer. If a lot of the calls we've had currently, even though we don't regulate them, will often be, you know, is so-and-so renting ISR posted on Airbnb? And on all those postings, they don't put necessarily, if at all, the address, because they don't want everybody to know until they've looked at where the actual addresses.
Yeah.
So for the town to go look, you know, you can't just put in the address, I think it's, you know, Twenty Harbor Drive, you can't just plug that in Airbnb, and it brings you up that one, because they all have different names and, you know, there's a general map and they show it, but if somebody could call in and say, I see number seven hundred is on Airbnb, are they licensed? Then we would be able to pull it up quickly. No, we don't have that.
Yeah, okay, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think this would be a really interesting feedback from people who are a little more experienced with renting the short-term rentals. I'll be honest, my short-term rental is only just now getting rented, so I don't know how this whole, that part works, but some of the feedback was it is more, it's a little more difficult to do that, so I think in a public hearing, it'd just be interesting to see what...
I was gonna say, I think we'll hit our limit when public hearing comes around.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that's the benefit of having people who have both kind of both perspectives come at it, because it'll help, you know, for finding...
I'm not sure which side this argument is on, but I know I wanna be on one side. If we put the short-term rental license required for advertising, and Airbnb organizations go out of the way, not put the address on, but there is a public record to, for someone wants to do a little digging, to connect the two. Now, I guess I don't care a lot about Airbnb or business model, but I do care about a resident who thought they were protected by not having their address on that site, so I know, now I know which side of the argument I'm coming down on. I'm worried about the resident thought they had protection in our public records providing access around that protection.
It's a good perspective, yeah, just tell me what you want. Take it out?
I mean, I guess we could have a town policy not to release the number, but I don't know how you'd protect it, but I think it's too paper-hazard.
This is all public records anyways. Anybody can call and ask if you're having those, it's public records.
You need to call.
Yes, but the connection of data we're collecting has to be public record.
Right.
There's no way of shielding part of it, okay?
No, the license would be anybody coming, it's public records, anybody could look at a license too.
So I do have an issue with, for protection of our residents, whether the license numbers should be in the advertisement. Maybe a requirement that they state that they're licensed, but not the number itself.
Why don't we put that under future discussion and move on?
Got it. The next section is sanitary waste, so this is submitting information that you have, that you can demonstrate that you have adequate sanitary waste disposal, that's in compliance with subsurface wastewater rules. I add this in here for discussion purposes, it... Um, it may be redundant in that if you have a house, theoretically you should have some sort of septic system, but I think one, a few things that were raised in other areas were there are houses that are perfectly fine operationally and don't have a septic system that you can easily track down on record. So are we then forced, would you be then forcing somebody to try to get an updated, you know, H G two hundred form when they don't really need one? So this, the occupancy limit kind of hits the, hits the, checks the box in a way for what you're trying to do with just proving that you have a good septic system. But I put it in here because it's a comprehensive list, so I'm just on both sides of the issue. It may not be necessary for a license.
We also have that, uh, any additional sleep, sleeping space in there too.
Mm-hmm.
So this would essentially say, ask them what the size of their septic tank is, right? And information about the leach field itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, both.
How about overboard discharge?
For or against?
Yeah, I thought those were all.
No.
Jesse, is every septic system on every building filed in, in the town?
No. The new ones.
The new ones. But all the old ones, there's no records. So it's gonna be very difficult for some people to comply with this.
It's just data they have to, you can, if it's working fine, you can get an H G two hundred. Pay aside a valuator to design you a new system in the event that fails. And that gets filed with the register, proving that you can replace the system.
So it really comes down to whether occupancy, occupancy limits covers this, or do we need to go the extra step?
I'd bother with putting the extra step in.
You're what?
Bothered by it. I think it's bur- very burdensome for a person who wants to rent out a room or two, or, or if it's, I know many older structures, the records.
How do you test the, if you don't know the size, how do you, you have to dig it up and look at it, or do you?
You can inspect it.
Yeah.
You have someone would come in, uncover the tank, and inspect the tank. They can tell.
Yeah, it is.
I mean.
A burden.
Oh, it's, it's, it's a pain.
It is. Uh, my thought is if you're really trying to just, again, I, if I were to have, if you said to me, let's create a simple ordinance, and I brought that in and didn't just add all these other things in here, this would be one that I would take out. And it's not because it's not an important topic in the town of Tremont where septic systems and water quality is a big deal. It's just that it's a much more difficult thing to try to do in a licensing ordinance. And theoretically, you have a house that is already in existence that either complies or doesn't. I mean, you, you have a system that was designed at some point to work. And if you need to upgrade it, you want to upgrade it anyway.
Your operative words there is to work, didn't necessarily say to comply.
Comply, sorry, there we go.
But no, really, I mean, a lot of homes have systems that work, but they not comply with even the standards when they put it in.
Yes, I have, uh, in my firsthand experience with that.
You're on the record here, so you may want to.
Yeah, no, I have a very compliant system.
I mean.
Hearing the.
Tags are easy to figure out.
It's a very expensive A compliance.
Tags are easy to figure out, leach fields are a challenge.
Hearing the arguments here, I'm inclined to delete this, at least for now.
I am too.
Anybody feel differently?
No.
Okay.
Uh, the other one is, uh, not a fully thought-out idea, but there are some examples in other places that have an evacuation plan. So if you need to, if you feel the need to have like an evacuation plan posted in your rental or, or have evidence that you have an evacuation plan. Um, again, this would be in one of those situations where if you're really trying to keep it simple, and you're not really asking, you don't wanna ask people to do more. Some of the other things earlier in this version, I think are, you have to do them anyway for insurance purposes. So that it's not really asking more of people.
Smoke alarms and things like that.
Smoke alarms, carbon monoxide, gas alarms, fire extinguishers, you know, the parking, the trash, and the occupancy limits. Those are other, like, kind of people that disagree.
Evacuation plan could be, go out the door, drive down the road, look for the first sign says evacuate off the island this way.
That's I do.
I think it's another requirement that needs to go off.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Delete.
Delete. The other one is, there are other places, and this can be reflected on the ordinance, but like, that ask for evidence of insurance and have a specific amount of insurance required. I'm not sure you guys wanna go down that road, but I put it in here for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I, I have no idea, that one million figure jumped at me that has a lot of money. I don't know what that means for insurance coverage.
I don't feel comfortable with towns setting insurance requirements for homeowners. Especially if we put it too low and someone says, brings us in as liable, that we didn't require more insurance in rentals.
But we would want proof that the renter has insurance covering short-term rental activity, correct?
I don't think so.
Not sure it's up to us.
What's that?
I'm just not sure it's up to us.
I don't think it's up to us.
It's their property, they, their insurance designs them.
What's a town, what's the advantage to the town? It's an open question. Um, that we have that knowledge.
Whether they have insurance?
Yeah.
Probably none. I mean, you, no, you.
Some people choose not.
Yeah. What, uh, what are other, uh, do other towns or communities require insurance? Cause it certainly would protect the, it protects the renter, because if they get hurt on the property.
This is, this is an example from another town. That, that provision. So what I, what I've done is, I mean, with a lot of research on other models, I'm not, generally speaking, I think there's a lot of, uh, benefit in trying to see what models are out there, rather than try to create some bunch of stuff from scratch. So this is a compilation of a lot of different research, so yeah. Sometimes require it, but I don't give a great point.
I, I don't know, I feel like an insurance requirement, I'm not sure that necessarily exposes the town to any risk, and I think it sort of separates the, I mean, if you're not gonna provide proof of insurance, then you probably ought not to be doing it. And so you kind of, you know, I'm not gonna say it separates the we from the chap, but it kind of does something like that.
So you, you would say you have insurance, but we don't pass on the coverage?
We don't pass on the coverage.
No, it's a, a blanket statement, we have insurance, or a certificate filed for insurance company, yes, it perhaps is insured, but we don't set the standards for the amount of insurance.
No, 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 we would.
Right.
We'd say, you know, commercial, I don't know, commercially reasonable insurance, you know, something like that, I don't know. Cause it's gonna be different, right? I mean, I, I would think, or someone might choose to get different, depending on how many rooms they're renting, or, you know.
I think we can write it, if you wanna just require that they have insurance, we will, we can make that.
Yeah, I don't have as much objection with.
To that.
To that.
Adequate for your, you know, whatever.
Oh, there you go, the adequate.
Yeah, 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 well, I mean, it's, you know.
Not above the subjective standards.
I want some life insurance.
Okay. Yeah, we'll make a provision on that. Um, the other two at the bottom were, I didn't really write anything about noise or minimum stays, but I put them in for discussion purposes, and I know you already have a transient accommodation for seven days, but, um, so we may just leave it at that. And the noise one, if you don't have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be just too difficult.
Just call the god.
Although, I, I do have to say that is one complaint that we've heard as a planning board from neighbors to some of these.
Yep.
Yeah.
Weekly rental properties. I, I see somebody in the audience who.
Oh, really?
Has expressed that as well.
I always felt that I shouldn't start mowing my lawn before eight o'clock, so that's just me, there's no ordinance.
Well, I think. No, leaf blow is before ten.
I thought that that was actually, we don't have a rule like that?
I feel like that's another ordinance that we need to work on that.
It's like, uh. We, we had somebody suggest that lobster fishermen shouldn't go out before.
Before three, or someone, you can't, you can't tell, that's not gonna work.
They do comply with the requirement to line all the boats up in line though, in the harbor. I've noticed, they comply with that ordinance.
I do feel like at ten o'clock, it should kind of quiet down on the evenings, and before, you know.
That's what we had on the camp.
Ten o'clock in the camp.
Yeah, we did the ten o'clock.
We get a lot of requests for noise ordinance. Do you have?
Yeah, but it's impossible to enforce, that's the problem.
Well.
We call our police department.
You require a police department to respond when the noise is happening and measure it properly.
Well, if you don't have one, you can't do anything at all. I mean, at least if you have one, you can do something, you know. And if people wanna get a permit to have a party, they can.
Sure.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
It's an issue for a different day, it sounds like.
Alright, well, I'm gonna take those two out. Uh, the next section is violations coming to the enforcement. Um, we may wanna get James to look at this. But what I have done, uh, what this model is, is there's, uh, things that list the violations of the chapter, um, where complaints can go, and complaints can go to the town. It's not, we didn't, we didn't specify like the code enforcement or it's a.
Certainly not the planning board, no.
It doesn't, well, yeah, but I mean, at this point, no.
I think it should go to select board.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it says, I, I agree.
Yep, and then the board of selectmen is the one that really kind of administers like when a license gets suspended, and what's it, and what happens there. And then the penalties, um, there's a couple of different options for penalties, and I don't know exactly which one to do, but the one that's under D currently, not the sidebar, is I think that, that, I know that that statute is the one that deals with like penalties if you have a violation for like a code issue. That's the statute.
You're talking about thirty A, I'm sorry, section four, four, five, two.
Yep.
Yeah, I looked it up and it was quite a wide range, I don't remember the exact figures.
Yep, and then, um, off to the side is a slightly different way to think about it.
Well, on these, on the sidebar, when I looked at this, I was, I would put an E in and say that unpaid fines become a lien on the property. That encourages payment real quick.
Yep. And then.
What would that entail though? What, what would that entail, putting a lien on the property then? Just filing in the court?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, registry, you don't have to go to court.
Yeah, it's just a letter. Uh, and then I need to change the references, obviously, but that's just the idea. Yes?
And can appeal to the zoning board of appeals? It'd just be, it'd be, you'd go to the courts if you wanna appeal something, correct?
Um, so on the next page is what you feel would be, and, and one version is don't get to appeal to board of appeals, and the other version is you should.
I kind of like going to board of appeals, only, uh, or zoning board, only cause it keeps it internal for a while, and, and more economical to run than to go to grown-up court to argue.
Yeah, so that's sort of, we have to work on the language a little bit for the appeals section, but I think that's the question. If you have a process where you want appeals for this particular thing to go away to court, great, if you have a board of appeals that you want this type of thing to go to the board of courts, we can write it that way.
Well, here, I'm confused, it says not appealable to.
Sidebar one.
Sidebar just says.
It's the reverse.
No, you're right, you're right.
Yep, says just go to the court.
Yeah. It should be, that's the question I mean to ask. Do you want me to write it so that it goes to the board of appeals, or do you want it to be just go to court?
Well, it depends, well, well, it's. How about the board of appeals? That seems to be what, uh, our town manager is suggesting.
I think we should keep it internal, they can still go to court after that.
Still go to court after that, yeah.
At least it makes it easier for a local resident to get a second argument.
Right, plead their case.
Plead their case.
Why they might have.
Yep.
You know, my daughter got married, we had a party, you know.
Oh, that, that's true.
Go straight to court, pound this.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
So if, if the decision was to revoke a license though, the, while it's under appeal, the license will remain in place, correct?
While under appeal.
While under appeal?
I don't know.
It's a good question. Vain revoked, so it's, yeah, so their decision will.
I, I, I don't know, how would that work? I don't know.
It's the same as yours.
You spent more days in law school than I did there, buddy.
Well, sometimes.
So you pay, you pay your penalty, and then take it to the appeals and hoping to get your money back, so you can still rent.
So it's kinda, right.
So the decision would stand, it'd be revoked until.
Until it's overturned.
Okay, alright, fine, then I don't care.
Should we post bail?
Okay, so I think the next step in this process is I'm gonna take these comments and make a updated version. And when's your next meeting?
Uh, thirteenth, June thirteenth.
Twenty seven.
So, maybe the best step would be just to have, here's a updated draft, and I can email it to everybody. But we, I could come back at the thirteenth for, I gotta check my calendar, I shouldn't say this without checking my calendar, but if I could come back, have a, here's where we, here's where we landed, and then also what Jesse could schedule it, when you wanna hold, what, at what, you wanna have a public hearing on this? Do you wanna do it as part of the planning board meeting, do you wanna do it as a separate public hearing? Um, it's really up to you guys. But I think that's really where we're headed. So we wanna be comfortable with the version that people are gonna see at public hearings.
Right.
So that's kind of the thirteenth, I think.
Yeah, I, I don't, I won't be at the meeting on the twenty seventh though.
So we, I don't know, it's really up to the town.
Is it June twenty seventh?
Just have a public.
I might have conflict that day too.
We get wolf trap watching Tedeschi Trucks Band, so.
Should, should we get together and come up with some options, and then we can talk about it on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I do have a draft application, but it's pretty far down the line, and then we also have, here's what other towns around have done for licensing. It's gonna be like a package, I don't know how you wanna.
Well, selectmen set the fees, right? So.
But do you wanna have a recommendation?
Yeah, we would have a recommendation, I would guess.
And I, I don't, I think you guys write your ordinances this way, but maybe you don't, but what I always learned was don't have your fees specifically in the ordinance, so this would be a separate, it's not gonna be in the ordinance.
That's the way we do it now, right?
Yeah.
So it can be changed, yes. My only thought is keeping it low initially, and we do have to cover administrative costs and that sort of thing, but.
Great. Anything else, any other thoughts, did I miss anything?
Are we gonna talk about fees and make a recommendation, other than keep it low?
Tonight? I, I don't, I don't, well, do you feel we should do that tonight?
Wait till thirteen, wait till thirteen.
On the fees? Yeah, which, I, I think we can wait. And if, if I'm just anticipating questions at a public hearing, I would say like, what we're thinking is a fee, something like this, and then take some comments on that.
Right. And it'd be good to get Jesse's recommendation, because he knows what it's gonna involve at the town office. Or we could just make it five thousand, no.
Well, you, you'll see in the fee structure, other communities that have places, like you have multiple units, the fee structure changes.
Well, yeah, I had a question about that, quickly. Uh, I was confused, okay, first unit a hundred, second two fifty. So is it cumulative, or is it like each unit it goes up?
Each unit it goes up.
Really?
Yep.
Well, so the more you own, the more you're paying?
Correct, if you own five units, well, I think it's actually, if you own five units, you pay two thousand dollars, so it's, it's cumulative in that sense.
For the fifth unit? Oh, yeah, okay.
Right.
Have, have you?
The room part is the part that thrown me off.
Did you see the statute, Nantucket did? I tried to get it online, I couldn't.
No, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
It was touted in the paper as, you know, this very comp, it was turned down. But, um, I tried to get it, I couldn't get it, I was curious with how they approached it. The summer community, it's an island, it was all sorts of things, has affluent areas, non-s affluent areas, it was, it was, it, I, I was curious, I wonder if you've seen it or not.
No, I haven't seen it, I'll have to look. Uh, what we, the research that we've done is pretty much all over the country. No, I haven't seen it. I'll have to look. Uh, what we, the research that we've done is pretty much all over the country in areas that are very similar to.
Well, that's why.
MBI, in specific, MBI in general, not like Tremont or, but, so we have, you know, there's, there's a lot of examples in a lot of other places in the country that are doing the same thing.
Cable, is that, is that just like a one-time, is this new, or is that my every?
Um, oh, I, I'll have to look at that. I'm just curious. Yep.
It might be the first.
It might be the first time.
Or it looks like, if you don't register in that month, you have to pay more.
Right.
That's what it looks like.
That's what it looks like. A lot more.
So, my recommendation.
They must be rich down south of the state.
My recommendation would be, again, recognizing that it's a very complicated and emotional topic, and that housing on MBI is definitely something that we all need to pay attention to. But to try to keep this as simple as possible is a good starting point.
I agree.
And that, I, I really am interested in that. It's my planner door coming out again, but the, the, the full breadth of the conversation is, is really interesting. It starts to bring up some good topics, if you can have a, a good conversation about it, I've found.
Great. No, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Look forward to seeing you on the thirteenth.
The thirteenth. I'll be front with Jesse. Because we're gonna do the junior right now. Thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have the, uh, subdivision application for the O'Keaves. The binary subdivision plan for Spruce Woods.
Hi.
Hi. Is it Bernard O'Keefe?
Yep.
Hi, how you doing?
Not too bad.
So, it's my understanding essentially what you wanna do is split off this one lot into two parcels, and that the reason that it kicks off subdivision review is because it's been less than five years since it's been, uh, first split off.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I was a little confused. Jesse set me straight. There are no buildings on either of these proposed lots, correct?
No, I bought, I bought this property from Larry Cole two years ago, and it's just woods.
Okay.
I just named it as Spruce Woods.
And, and the other property, the O'Keefe and Daly, is where the house is and the barn and everything?
Yeah, yeah, and it's adjoining, uh, an abutting property.
And the yurt and little cabins.
Yeah. Yeah, seven years ago I was here.
Yeah. But we weren't, so.
No, I was.
Yeah. That's right.
I remember.
Anybody have questions for Mr. O'Keefe before we get started here?
How the yurts doing?
Still holding up a little.
You wanna go through the application here? We ready? Okay. We don't need a separate motion. We're dewy on these, Jesse. We don't have all these, okay? Okay, location map adequate to show relationship to adjacent properties. We have the copy of the Tremont tax map here, so that's a yes. Any existing subdivision proximity to proposed subdivision? Yes, hmm, yes. It's, or code enforcement said that. So, where's the existing subdivision? Also have a large map here, if anybody wants to look at it.
Doesn't it say it's the existing backfield stuff? Backfield's been subdivided back there, hasn't it?
That's under streets, that comment.
I wasn't sure, and I saw that I wasn't applying to ANB, that's why I asked.
Where did he put, yeah, say, is there one somewhere?
Well, Backfield Road is separate lots back there.
Yeah, that's a different one, yeah. We'll get to that in B. I wanna do.
I, I, I know, but that, that means there would be another subdivision that's adjacent to proximity.
Backfield Road just gives you access to the property to the south, correct?
Yeah, just to forty-nine, um, and seventy-five.
This is what's shown on the, this is proposed.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's proposed, yeah.
But that's the only way, as of now, that, that you could get in there.
Yeah, well, I see what you're saying, Jeff. You're saying where Backfield Road and those lots might have been a subdivision?
Yeah, I think it was a subdivision.
Okay, I, before my time.
It's before my time, too. I, I, I know the family, or know of the family, but.
The McIntires?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they own all the whole road.
They own. Yeah, they own a lot.
Yeah.
Well, actually, yes, no, it doesn't really have any bearing on the application itself, right?
No, I think it's based on Larry's divisions of the, of the part that I bought.
Okay. We okay with the yes sign?
I mean, you can see it on the tax.
You don't see it on the tax map, okay. So, it should be no?
No, I said you can see it on.
Oh, oh.
You can see it on tax.
Yeah, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, forty-seven.
So, it is yes, okay. Now, locations, naming any existing and proposed streets. Existing Backfield Road, but this is a proposed street here, or road, right?
I don't think it's being proposed.
Is it?
It's most likely where the road would go, but. I'd say your existing road is Route one oh two. Location names of any existing proposed streets.
Okay, then that's a yes.
One oh two.
So, Tremont Road?
The Tremont Road, okay. Tremont Road, not. Any boundaries of zoning districts with designations?
Did you change that to Tremont Road, Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 I put yes.
With, as Tremont Road.
Yeah, Tremont Road.
You struck out Backfield.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Zoning districts with designations. Let's see the notes on.
Is the bottom of the notes?
I'm getting there. Yeah, zoning rural residential's in, this, actually, it says residential, but we'll overlook that. That's on there. Outline a proposed subdivision, we have that. That's on the plan. Other required permits, not applicable. Blueberry plan shall be submitted in two copies up more than one hundred feet to the engine, addition eight copies for plan reduced to size, blah, blah, blah. We, we did submit those, right? Okay, we got those. Following you from, uh, applying the application. Proposed name of subdivision, name of town, assessors, tax map, tax map, and lot numbers. We have those. Evidence of right title or interest in the property. There is a deed in the packet. Satisfy you, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody else?
Yeah.
Field survey of boundary lines of the tract giving complete descriptive data by bearings and distances made in service by the licensed land surveyor. Plan shall indicate type of monument to be set and found at each corner. See bolt founds, nails set. We know there's this, Tom Benson did it, so we're all set there. Speak up if anybody has any issues. Date the plan was prepared, north arrow, graphic map scale, names and addresses of the owner of records, subdivider, individual or company prepared plan, names of adjoining property owners. It's on the plan. Number of acres within proposed subdivision, location of vegetative coverage together, I think, buildings, watercourses, and, and other essential existing physical features. We know there are no buildings on the property itself, and, uh, watercourses, we show some wetlands.
Shows a stream.
Yeah, a stream. Okay. Proposed lot lines of approximate dimensions and lot areas. It's on the plan. And they're marked, okay. Proposed names of any roads and numbers assigned to lots. We have numbers assigned. Existing roads. Location, names, present whiffs of any existing and or proposed streets, easements, building lines, parks, and other open spaces or on adjacent to the sub, on or adjacent to the subdivision.
Can we go back one?
Yeah, to proposed names.
No, lot, no, I see lot one, but I don't see lot two.
Down there, bottom.
Down the bottom?
Next to the stream.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. I, I do have the big map, which shows it a little better.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
Actually, I have several copies. If you, let me pass one down there, Jeff, or you all set?
I'm all set. I'll raise another stupid question.
Okay. I'm sure you'll need it somewhere, right? Okay, uh, where was I? Proposed names of any roads, numbers assigned to lots, we have that. Location, names, and present whiffs of any existing or proposed streets, easements, building lines, parks, and other open spaces on or adjacent to the subdivision. We all set there?
I have.
Okay, I, I, we're H?
Yes.
What do I miss? I don't see any of that.
Well, there are no proposed streets.
Right.
There's no easement.
No.
Building lines.
There we go. If there's building lines, means there's no building? We don't need building lines?
Correct.
So, it's not for proposed building?
Right.
You're not, you put a park on there, or open spaces?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The width and location of any streets or public improvements shown on, upon the official map and comprehensive plan of any within the subdivision.
I think that's.
Should be not applicable.
That's not.
Yeah. Not applicable. Any parcel of land to be dedicated to public use in the conditions of such dedication, not applicable. Location of any open space to be preserved, and a description of proposed improvements in management, not applicable. Names and addresses of owners of record of adjacent property, including property directly across an existing public street. Uh, we have an abutter's list where they all notified properly. Okay, we got that. Location of any zoning boundaries affecting the subdivision. Says yes, but is that not applicable to? Because it's all in the same zone. What's that?
Yeah, there's no zone change.
Yeah, it should be not applicable, right? Boundaries of any flood hazard areas and the hundred-year flood elevation delineated on the plan. If any of the portion of the subdivision is in a flood-prone area, not applicable. It's not in there. Contour lines at ten-foot intervals showing elevations to mean sea level. Okay, there are twenty-foot intervals on the plan, but they should be ten, according to our ordinance.
Yeah, so I just condition it for Tom, they could.
And have Tom. Everybody agree that, that can be a condition of approval?
If, I mean, if you're, I think you've accepted the twenty before, if you weren't concerned over the contour.
I was trying to recall whether I had.
I feel you've had that conversation before.
Maybe, and I think it actually, let's see what it actually says. What is that?
The fact that it's twenty feet over a ten-acre parcel.
Yeah.
It's not too steep. Barely level.
What do you think, folks?
I'm okay with twenty on this.
Yeah, I mean, you just add one line somewhere.
An eighty.
Here.
Should we make some motions, say that we accept, uh, ten feet, instead of ten-foot intervals, or?
Twenty-foot interval.
Twenty, uh, twenty foot instead of ten, thank you.
Yes.
I'll take that motion right now.
So, move?
Second.
Motion, a second on the table, to accept the twenty-foot intervals shown on the plan, instead of the ten-foot intervals required in the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Okay.
Four, zero. Subsurface disposal systems, since there's nothing on there. We do have test pit analysis, okay, that was shown on the plan. So, but it's not applicable because there's nothing there.
Well, I think you'd say yes, if they're on there.
The pit analysis. Centralized or shared subsurface sewage disposal system, there is none, so that's not applicable. Evidence of adequate groundwater supply and quality may be requested by the board and shall be submitted by well driller to proposed subdivisions in the watershed of a lake, cause risk concentration, impact on groundwater must be determined. We're not within the watershed of a lake, so not applicable, instead of no, that he has, okay. Copy of the most recent deed for the parcel, copy of all deed restrictions, covenants, and easements, and right-of-way, that's part of the application. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Copy of any covenants or deed restrictions intended to cover all or part of lots and subdivision. Is that on the plan, I believe?
Usually is if there are.
Yes. There aren't any, that I can see. Anybody?
I don't find any.
So not applicable?
That's it unless...
What's that?
You're not putting any new restrictions on the...
No.
So yes.
Copy of that portion of the state soil survey covering subdivision. I think that's necessary in this case. Correct? I don't see... Anybody have an opinion on that? Not applicable? The ordinance says a copy of that portion of the state soil survey covering subdivision when the survey shows soils which are generally unsuitable for the uses proposed, the board may require the submission of a report by a registered soil scientist indicating the suitability of soil conditions for those uses. Not applicable? Moving on. Adequate stormwater management plan must be provided. Well, we don't have one. And so what makes this a little bit difficult is if this are just an amendment, we wouldn't be considering this.
I think we need something here, don't we?
It says no, yeah. He, uh, John Mark, no.
No which?
No. We could make that a condition too, you think?
I think make... I mean, I... What concerns me, we have two wet areas shown on it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna get to that a little later.
Yeah. I'm just wondering what...
Storm, yeah. Okay, that's a no. Unless anybody disagrees. Speak now forever, hold your peace. Location and size of existing proposed and proposed subsurface sewage systems, wells, culverts, and drainage ways on or adjacent to the property to be subdivided. John says subject areas to be... Are shown, but I guess he's just referring to the test pits? And is that adequate?
And there's a well, it's like adjacent, so...
Where's the well? It's...
Two properties up, you can see a well identified.
Okay. It's a yes, Jesse. No, go ahead.
When the surveyor shows on plan a test pit, it means it was a successful test pit, was it just was test pit? We can rely that the...
Right, yep.
That's a good question.
Preliminary soils, yeah.
Okay. Guess not that he tested it, okay.
Right, yes, that's correct.
Should be called successful.
We tested it and it is a pit.
STP.
A determination must be made whenever a subdivision situated whole or in part within two hundred fifty of any wetland, great pond, or river or within their watershed that the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that water, uh, body. But it's not within two hundred fifty feet of any... Oh, wait, we have wetlands, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you... Right. Green ones are classified as wetlands, not as special significant.
Yeah, it's the red one, it said.
Just kind of cedar moss, sea, wet areas.
It says forested.
We do have, I don't know if anybody... Hope everybody looked at it. Uh, Watership Resources Consultants LLC did a report. It's at the back of the binder. And mentions the wetlands.
That was, um, specifically for the proposed road, um, on the fifty foot strip.
Right, which is going right through one of those wetlands. And so that would really require according to this, a DEP and perhaps Army Corps.
Yeah, I've been talking with them, they couldn't come out until spring, so I was talking to them all winter and, um... So they knew there was a vernal pool there, but they didn't know if it was of special significance. And I just had a real... A recent email from the guy at the DEP saying it's not. So I need a tier one exception, I think is what it's called. But that's what I would... I knew, I... He's already got my application for it, so I think I'm just waiting to get that approved.
Well, we need... Does he approve of that?
Yeah, that's it. Okay. That was the one thing I was... I was missing, if that was necessary.
So we'd have to make that a condition if we're going to... I guess as well, that people... You could go on, that we need to see that. Does that make sense, Jesse? Jeff, any other concerns down there?
No.
Okay. Beth?
No.
Okay. Uh, map identifying all freshwater wetlands regardless of size streams and brooks within or abutting the proposed subdivision. We do have that, it is noted on the plan. Estimate of the amount and type of vehicular traffic to be generated on a daily basis and at peak hours. Expect, uh, a lot of traffic to be going in and out of this property.
On this road, as of now, well, I'm selling that portion to somebody, uh, and as of now, he's just building a big barn to store things in, so I don't see anything that...
Yeah, okay. I don't see where it's gonna increase traffic, okay.
Can we go back again?
To which one?
Uh, the... Uh, all freshwater wetlands regardless of size stream.
Yeah, X.
With abutting. Um, I want, look at the abutting word, proposed subdivision. Couple who says wetland extends beyond property line. Do we need any more information than just that statement? And then the one in the back, the small one that has a stream in it.
That also says extends, wetland extends beyond one. Oh, and the stream there, yeah.
No, it doesn't say that.
Oh, the stream, okay. I was looking down at the bottom, at one of their...
I'm wondering if we need more data on those two wetland areas. Especially if we're gonna be talking about watershed and management and so forth.
Okay, what additional information do you think we need?
I don't know.
They should... Okay. If I knew, I could tell you what I needed. Okay.
So is DEP seeing that one too?
I'm looking at our... It says abutting.
The second one, the one in...
I don't know, Roger's been talking with him and they... He didn't, he didn't... I don't think he flagged anything in that particular area. It's just kind of a, you know, mozzie lowland area. It's not like, um...
Map identification.
There's no standing water or anything like that in that whole space, other than the boat creek.
But I think you'd have more concerns if this ten acres was being proposed as ten new lots versus what it is proposed as.
Okay, the eleven acre, okay.
Good amount of space for that barn.
You know, if, if the person who buys the ten wants to...
Further subdivision, and, and, you know...
Then you have more concern about whether it went off, but... Or if they wanna come propose a commercial project for you, but...
Short-term rentals. So we okay with that? You think, Jeff?
If everyone else is okay, I'll...
Yeah, I think so, I mean, the DEP's gonna have to weigh in on some of this anyway. And there's gonna be a stormwater management plan.
Okay. Is that Roger who would do that, the stormwater management plan, or is that a Tom thing?
Neither.
Roger.
Ro... Can Roger do that?
Yeah.
Uh, statement of adequate financial capacity to complete the project. There's really nothing there, so not applicable. So I'll take a motion to find a complete the conditions we talked about. Which are stormwater management and DEP approval on the wetlands, is that it? The only two things, I believe? Is there something else?
I think that was it.
Yeah.
So when, um... When would I need to get that in to get into the next meeting? Next meeting's June thirteenth, if, um...
I think you're gonna have a problem with getting the DEP stuff, frankly. Yeah, I think that's gonna take a while.
Well, I'm pretty far in that process. I was just reading the last email. He has most everything he needs, he just needs a few more things from me, so I don't know how long after that.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't either. I'm sorry, that's one thing we can help you with.
I think... I can find that out tomorrow.
But the DEP one, you may be able to... I'm not sure you mean it for the next step, but you could condition your approval of the next step on the DEP. Your approval condition would be to apply to that when it comes.
For me, I'm just trying to sell the land. For the next guy, he's the one that would be building the road, um, so I don't know if that's...
Right.
Matters at all.
But it shows it going right through a wetland of significance.
Yeah, well, I... Yeah. There is some doubt.
Which, which is not good.
Yeah.
And, uh...
It's kind of...
Well, he... I did, I mean, I can forward the recent email, say it's, it's not... That says it's not a wetland of significance now. I do still need to get a term of...
You're not actually proposing to do anything there anyway, right?
No, I'm just trying to sell it.
So it's really, it's really...
You have to provide that...
It's not him that will provide. Like, he's not gonna build anything there.
Yeah, but he's the one that's doing the subdivision.
Yeah, but he's not gonna do anything with it.
Still, the ordinance says that he wants to do it.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
But the subdivision itself doesn't actually, just by creating a line, doesn't do anything to the land.
No, but we don't wanna approve a lot of the subdivision.
The next guy, that whoever you're gonna sell to, it's caveat emptor. I mean, they're the ones that have to get a road approved. If they buy it and they can't, well, then they've got a property they got a helicopter into. It's a great, great sale.
Right. Yeah, 'cause, and he, he wanted to buy it on the condition that the subdivision was approved, but he didn't make it a condition that that road that I got that DEP permit, so that's important, 'cause I bought this land...
I mean, you're not proposing to put a road there, right?
I'm not, no, it's, it's up to him. Um, and I did buy this land originally without the previous owner having a DEP permit or a DOT permit or anything.
I mean, we're just creating the boundaries, like, let's see here. I'm not trying to... I'm trying to follow this. A little sliver of land there with the... Do you own that currently?
The little, little sliver there?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I'm gonna keep, and I do own it currently, yeah.
Right, but the, the access road here, where that's gonna be the access road from...
Yes.
You own that?
Yeah.
So it's always been there. You're not proposing to do anything there. You're just proposing to, to keep this down here, correct? And sell this here.
Yeah.
You're not doing anything on this at all.
No. It's up to the next, the next number.
Which lot are you keeping?
I'm keeping the small one, which is adjoining a, a property I currently own.
And that's how you'll access that property?
That's how I'll access that property, yeah.
Well, you'll access it from the other end soon. Yeah, I assume you're coming from the other side, right? You're selling the property out back because they have access from the other road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Finally, finally putting it together. It's the weirdest big property I've ever seen. Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, they, well, someone, whenever they did it, they, someone was smart and thought about leaving a way to get from here. But it does go through a wetland.
Yeah.
He was the one that...
Yeah, he, he drew this up in that way, um, because there was another property on that.
So that you would have access to that back lot.
'Cause otherwise, he would've had to sell that back lot with another lot that he wanted to buy it out and sell on its own.
Right, so coal is the one that developed the strip.
Yeah.
To access the back lot.
So he could sell that back.
Right. Otherwise, there would've just been, you know, no actual access to that, to that lot.
Right. Landlot.
Yeah.
Well...
I mean, it kind of...
You already have a buyer, you said?
Yeah. Danielle's my real estate agent there, she can confirm all of that.
Well, I mean, it's up to... I mean, you're not proposing anything here other than, other than drawing a line. Make a big bridge. That car... That right, right here, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Kind of goes back to what I said, if it was a traditional subdivision that he was dividing into six lots, then he would be putting in a road down here to get to the six lots.
So it's the buyer that's got the...
Did not.
Yeah.
But we, do we wanna approve a subdivision that we know has a wetland challenge?
That's my concern, Jeff. Yeah, does approving a subdivision in itself, what, I mean, what more does that do though? Does that necessarily approve? If no one's proposing any construction on it, it doesn't propose... It doesn't approve any, anything to do, any development on it.
Or just you could sell it to endless summer on the back.
Hey, we...
And they could come up with a...
If I had been able to...
Yeah, and then they could come in from the other way.
Yeah, if I had been able to sell it to any of butter, I wouldn't have had to do this application. But I passed all the butters and...
They don't want it.
The only, well, the only one that wanted it passed away.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so...
Hate that, don't you?
Yeah.
Certainly considerate.
I don't know that approving... I don't know that approving the subdivision...
Two years.
Two years.
Though necessarily means that the buyer of the... The piece that's subdivided gets any rights other than the fact that they just get that piece of land. They don't know if they can do it.
Right, but if he sells him a piece of land he can't get into...
That's his fault, that's his problem.
Because Larry sold me a piece of land I couldn't get into, so I was like, can I do the same thing? Um, I mean, and I, I definitely am going to continue this process anyway, but just, I didn't, you know, for this application, I didn't know if I need it.
So will you pass on the DEP approval to the person you're selling it to?
Yeah.
DEP approval, what are they gonna approve? What's the...
They're approving, so it's not really that significant of a wetland, but it, it, it has a vernal pool in it, which could have some salamanders and stuff, so I, I need to build something under fifteen, like a fifteen foot road, it needs to be under fifteen foot road, and then I, and then I can get a simple permit from them.
Are you gonna build that?
No, I don't, I'm not gonna build it anymore, but I originally started going through this process when I thought I might keep the land. And that was like in the fall. And now that I'm selling it, I'm still getting emails from them and everything, but, but it's gonna go on to this next guy who's buying it.
So you started the process?
I started the process because I, I didn't know I was gonna sell the land in last September. I, um... And then I decided over the winter to sell the land.
Okay. Okay. You started the process with DEP because you thought you were gonna put in a road there.
Yeah, and, and then winter happened and they couldn't check on the salamanders until...
Like, I don't know what we're, we would look at that, what... He's not proposing to do anything, like, I don't know what we're... Like, I don't know what we're...
Essentially, it's gonna come down to the new owner getting...
That's right, that's right.
And he said he's not even a hurry for it.
Gonna ask for the DEP authorization at that point before we issue...
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, the driveway permit just goes to CEO, right?
Unless it's over soon, then they'll come back to you.
Well, this is quite long here.
So they'll come back to you.
Yeah, it's like... Hundred feet?
Three hundred. Three hundred and thirty-one, almost.
And I think now it's eleven hundred.
Eleven, no, it's eleven hundred, it's, yeah, it's like a quarter mile. We've had a couple of these where it's, it's, it's a subdivision, but they're just kind of redrawing a line, and they're not doing...
That's an amendment, yeah, yeah.
So it's like...
That's, and the only reason that we have to go through all this this time is because it was less than five years since they subdivided originally.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is a state law, right? Not, not our ordinance.
I think there's currently, is there a motion, did anyone?
No, not yet.
Okay.
We were talking about con... We started talking about conditions, yeah.
And we went down the path of...
And then you went down the wetland DEP thing.
I just, I don't even know, so what are they looking at? Like, what is the DEP? What are they, what are they approving or not?
They tell them the distance, like, the road has to be this way.
But, so he, you're applying to put a road in with DEP? But, so he, you're applying to put a road in with DEP?
That's what I entered originally in September, and then they had to wait all the way through the winter to check on the salamanders and, and then.
And did they do that?
They did, and that's why they, that's why my recent emails are saying that it's not significant.
But you're not applying to put the road in before us right now, right?
No, no.
The person he's selling the land to.
I'm gonna pass the process on ahead.
Right, so that's why I'm not sure, like, uh, you know, I don't.
He's just trying to get approval to.
To redraw the boundary.
Right.
Yeah, really, yeah, just wanna sell it and keep that, that smaller portion. I'll be glad and I'll have to worry about that road.
And about those salamanders.
And about those salamanders.
I just think what's interesting is the question that you have before the DEP.
Yeah.
That we're waiting on is different. It's completely different than what is being asked of us. We're not looking, we're not looking at reviewing our driveway at all.
Well, when I, I think when I talked to John and Tom, they said I wouldn't need it for this.
I think that's prob, I think that's probably true.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at. I don't, I don't care what, what they say, because we're just drawing, redrawing a boundary line out back. There's not anything proposed to be done.
Right.
Now, whoever you sell it to.
There's a couple test bits.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some test bits, like what I asked.
SDGs. Yeah.
Having saw that, I have no idea how to move it forward.
I was gonna say, yeah, let's take a motion.
Well, I, I think it, we would probably, it's complete, subject to, I think there were, were two?
Hold on, one more thing. What, what, I wonder, it seems like he's, almost has the information in hand, right?
Oh, for.
For the DEP, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was partway through the process, but I, I would've waited if, if Tom or John had said I'd need it for this meeting, but they didn't say I'd need it for this meeting, that's why I'm still underway with that.
John Larson said that?
I think so, yeah. I mean, it's been a long winter.
Cause he told me it should be conditional upon that.
Upon the, the approval.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
But he's not proposing to build the road.
I don't know, I'm just telling you what that he told me.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's before, so I, cause I was reading, trying to figure, I was like, what, I don't understand what's going on here. I don't think you're, you're just proposing to.
I mean, when I checked and see that I had everything I needed to go, to turn the folder, that's, they didn't bring up that part of it. And they do a note that I was like looking into it in the fall.
Jesse, go give something on, it says we shouldn't be creating lots that we can't get to.
I think there, there's no risk of not being able to get to it. Of course, e- even if it, even if I had to get a more complicated permit, I still would've been able to do it. It was just a matter of, like, time and money and, and things like that. But there's, there's, I've never had anybody at the DEP say that it's, you can't make a road there. There's plenty of roads that go through the same, same area, the same kind of wetland, the same salamanders, brother.
Okay, that's, I didn't want, I felt uncomfortable creating something that couldn't be developed.
Right, yeah.
And so taking the worst-case scenario, if you couldn't put a road there, you've done that.
Yeah.
But there are solutions. It just may become expensive for this buyer.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's hard to go finishing doing this just to be nice to the buyer. Like, I don't, I don't have to, well, unless I have to do it for this, I actually get the, the DEP permit for the road in order to sell it. It wasn't a condition of the buyer that he needed this in order to buy it, right? Yeah.
I couldn't find anything, Laura.
I know, and it's sort of.
Leaving for looking.
Now, here's something under what we're considering here. That the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or adversely affect the shore land of that water body. The proposed subdivision doesn't do that, but the driveway might, is the way I'm looking at it.
But it's really not a body of water either.
It's a vernal pool.
So, so I can read you the last email I got from them, just to.
Yeah, please, just, just for us.
Okay, I checked with the other staff who would handle the peatlands in the past. They, they were worried for a little while, there was, they were peatlands, or something to do with peatlands. And it seems the presence of the histosol soils alone is not enough to classify the wetland as a peatland. In this case, as long as the total impact amount will be less than fifteen hundred square feet, a tier one should be all that's needed. And that's the, the square footage of the road, which I already determined with him, it is gonna be less than that amount. So a tier one is a really simple permit that I, you know, it's not gonna be a trouble for me or the next buyer yet, that tier one permit. It's like twelve hundred bucks and, and, I don't know, I should have it pretty soon.
I'd say if the DEP is issuing a permit, then it doesn't adversely.
It doesn't work.
Adversely impact water body, or they wouldn't issue it.
Yeah.
So you wanna go back to that one, revisit that?
I would go back to your motion and just do it. I think that.
I, I, okay, I'll take a motion.
I forget what things we're, we're waiting on.
But the thing is, we have that as no now, it should be corrected, but.
On the DEP piece?
Yeah, wait, yeah.
On W?
On W, yes.
So you think, I mean, the, the other, the other possibility would be saying it's not applicable.
Yeah.
Because there's no, this applicant is actually not proposing any development whatsoever that would impact.
Okay, yeah, why don't you make a motion to that effect?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
All our subdivisions come in quite often with nothing proposed, but lots.
Nothing but what?
Lots.
Yeah.
So that argument can be made of any subdivision.
But how do you, so how do you, how do you, that's, how do you pass on that without knowing what they're gonna do for, for, like, what's the buildings they're gonna put up? And, you know, I mean, how do you, it's drawing property lines. But I guess, I guess in, in those, in those, though, typically, there's a subdivision plan, they are gonna build something. Uh, the.
Is there a road?
At least a road or something. We're not even, he, it's, it's, I think it's odd, it's because of the fi, it's because of the five-year thing, right? That's what's, that's why we're pick, cause we've had a couple other ones, like, pick, like, the. We've had a couple other ones like this, where they're just.
Just an amendment, yeah.
Right, if it was three years from now, it wouldn't come to you at all.
Wouldn't come to us at all.
Anybody.
Can you wait that one?
So Jeff, I think it's just kind of an oddity of the timing. That we're, that we look at it as a subdivision, even though it's really not, there's nothing that they're planning to do.
Yeah, if you owned it, you could just carve it off, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Right, if, if, if I could've sold it to a subdivider or something, then I.
A, a butter.
On a butter, yeah, then I wouldn't be here.
Or if you owned it for five years or whatever.
Or, yeah, same thing, yeah.
Just get carved off as a D.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
What is?
My mind's gone.
Well, I, I mean, certainly, I think we could find that, I'm trying to find where to start. W, I don't know.
W.
W.
Three.
We don't need a motion on this, do we?
Three W is not applicable?
Well, we need to change it anyway.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah. Not applicable? Is that what we?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll move that, um, um, you know, for the purposes of completeness requirements, uh, section, uh, well, subsection W relating to, uh, uh, determination of whether, um, uh, wetlands or other water will be adversely affected is not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development.
A second, I.
Jesse said we didn't need a motion, but I think it, it's better to cover all pieces and do the motion. Okay, we have motion second on table.
Can, can you give me just a moment?
Okay, yeah.
I just wanna read, read what we need to do here. God, it's poorly worded, I'll go along, yeah, okay.
Okay, all in favor? Four, zero, okay.
So what was left? It was one other one that.
Okay, it was the stormwater management plan.
It's a very little creature.
Argue the same motion.
Yeah, I don't know what, like, what, what's the plan for, for a property line? Like, I don't know what the plan would be.
Right.
There isn't one.
So I'm gonna move that.
The buyer's gonna have the headache.
That's right.
Yeah.
Non-applicable.
I'm gonna move it to this, that is not applicable because there is no, uh, actual development proposed by the applicant.
Motion second on the table, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Okay. Well, did you have discussion?
I.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry. Not applicable, okay. I'll take a motion to approve the application for Spruce Woods, the Spruce Woods.
Let's, I'm sorry. I will move that we find the, uh, application for Spruce Wood complete.
Second.
Motion second to find the application for the Spruce Woods complete. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Jeffrey?
Yeah, I.
Four, nothing, okay, four, nothing. Okay, now we need to schedule a public hearing for this. Suggested, I think, uh, thirteenth, June thirteenth, six, six P M. Take a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the table to schedule a public hearing for the Spruce Woods subdivision, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M, right here in the town office meeting room. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Okay. Good luck selling it.
God, there is a buyer.
Caveat emptor.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, remand from appeals court meeting, February ninth.
I'm gonna leave, dismiss myself for me.
Yes, you don't wanna slip around to say your turn or anything, or do you wanna go home?
I smell my dinner cooking.
I will say, it's a bummer the Lawsons don't hear from us.
Will, um, will, um, excuse you, yes.
Have a good evening, guys.
You can note that Jeff leaves the meeting at eight twenty. Uh, let me explain here. These findings of fact are just what we went over the last time, through the whole process. The only thing new is this color layer here, okay, which is explanatory. Why the appeals court sent this back to us, they should've had all this to begin with, I have no idea. So I am going to just say, I'm gonna entertain a motion, if you guys looked this all over, okay, to just, uh, approve the final decision and, uh, findings of fact. As presented tonight. Does that make sense, Jesse?
Yeah, as long as you've all reviewed, I believe, it reflects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they, the motion to say that it does reflect what the plan would be. Night, Jeff.
Yeah, deny three to one. Denied three to one.
Everything else I think was four, oh, the one thing.
Yeah, I mean, don't, I'm, I'm, I am curious, did they have the, the recording for, for this meeting, or, or? No, we don't know?
They haven't, I don't know if they've watched it.
Okay.
They are available.
They're available.
Available. So they sent back what this, so that.
I know, I was not the one who prepared the packet for the Board of Appeals, so I don't, and I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know what they were given from the. They said that they did not see findings on your decision.
Okay, and this, this would be the findings, right?
They did not get.
Which, yeah, we went through and signed it.
Right, right, right.
Through the whole process, yeah.
So, so I won't, so.
What's that?
They said we didn't do our job.
Basically, that's what they're saying, but, uh, I don't think they got the right information. Their motion was, uh, to remand the pointy head application back to the planning board for findings of fact and conclusions of law.
So I, I will move, uh, to, uh, submit to, to, to the Board of Appeals, uh, the, um.
Do we, what, I don't think we wanna say that, no, no.
Oh, to the record or whatever.
Make a motion, this, yes.
So I'm.
To accept this final decision dated.
Okay. So I, I will make a motion to accept, uh, as our final decision, the document entitled Final Decision dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, contains a summary, uh, of our, um, decision, as well as Attachment A, which is the document which contains our findings of fact as our decision in the matter of pointy head campground.
I'll suck it up.
Sounds good to me. Motion second on the table, uh, any discussion, folks? Okay, all in favor? Three, zero. Thank you. Quick, I know, I know it's late, I wanna make, say, two quick things. We have a deputy CEO who's gonna be starting June fifth, I believe, right?
Officially July first.
Okay. But she might be here earlier, okay. And she'll be working two and a half days a week, and we're sharing her with Southwest Harbor. So I just wanted to let you know there'll be somebody in.
Okay.
Okay. And also, I got an email from a woman from Climate to Thrive, and wants to come talk to us at a meeting about sustainability. I can't remember what the email said, it's been so long now.
So the, um, as part of the grant from the state, the new resilience partnership grant that the town received in fall of twenty-three, the select board, a part of that grant hired Climate to Thrive to do a community resilience plan for the town. So she's emailing on behalf of that plan, that she wants to schedule a time to speak with all the various boards and committees, to get their input on certain subjects or topics in that.
And in my reply to her, I said that I would bring it up at a board meeting and we would get back to her.
So is he asked for, for like a presentation?
Yeah.
I think she wants to come and ask some questions as she's directing the plan that relates to the plan.
We can give her some time, I just don't know when would be good.
So I just put it on agenda this.
Twenty-seventh would be good.
I won't be here.
I, I.
Is anything important gonna happen on twenty-seventh? Do we know?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yep, and thirteenth, other than the public hearing and stuff, we have anything coming up?
Nothing new right now.
Maybe that's a good time to have her come, huh? We'll give her twenty minutes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, just expect it to take long.
What, when's that, what date now?
Our next meeting, the thirteenth.
Yeah, sure.
Can I let her know, do you want? Okay, be happy to. She never responded to me when I wrote back, so. Okay, um, take a motion to set the next meeting for June thirteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And, um, motion to adjourn at eight, uh, twenty-seven.
I said you got three minutes.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great, thanks, folks.
I'm just gonna go home and watch Blues.
Watch what?
The Celtics lose.
No, yeah, how about the Lakers?[1793.74]